All right. Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, September 9th. It is 7:01 PM. This is a regular meeting of the Town Council. Will everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, members of Town Council are present in chambers. Persico, Coput, Mauer, Lapellus, Formicella, O'Rourke, Wales. Duvu, filing Town Council members here virtually, Reed. There are no members of Town Council absent. All right. Moving on to our consent calendar. I ask that the consent calendar pass as presented. If there's no objection, hearing no objection, I'm passing the consent calendar as presented. I ask that communication items A through R be incorporated into the minutes of our meeting. Moving on to item V, public participation. I will begin with folks in the gallery here in Town Council chambers. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate this evening? Please step forward to the microphone, name an address for the record. Go once, go twice, nobody. All right, moving on to those who are here virtually. Is there any member of the public that is here using their telephone or a computer or laptop or tablet that would like to participate during public participation? Please remember unmute yourself, star six on your phone, or if you're using a mobile application or a website link, we're going to deselect the microphone with the red line through it, so that no longer has a red line through. Once again, is there any member of the public that would like to participate that is here online? That would like to participate? Please remember to unmute yourself, star six on your phone, or select the microphone to remove the red line. Hearing none, seeing none, I am closing public participation. We'll be on to appointments. Item A, I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 24-124, that the Town Council hereby appoint Mark O'Donnell, Publican of 132 Old Tannery Road, to the Board of Finance for a term ending November 24th, 2025, filling the vacancy of Republican Michael Manjoe's. Is there a second? Second by Donald and Wales, discussion? Mark O'Donnell is the current Police Chief for the Connecticut Police Department and has been a full-time officer in the department for 39 years. Mr. O'Donnell has resided in Monroe for 40 years in his graduate at Massey High School. He resides in Monroe with his wife, daughter, and granddaughter. As Police Chief, Mr. O'Donnell is familiar with managing a municipal budget with the hallmarks of fiscal responsibility. He has been a capstone judge at Massey and a mentor to high school and college students. Mr. O'Donnell is looking forward to giving back to the town of Monroe. I will note for the record that Mr. O'Donnell was interviewed at LNA this evening. His nomination was passed over to Town Council for its full consideration. Mr. O'Donnell opined that he would abide by the Code of Ethics and Town Charter, that he would do what was in the best for the Monroe outside of his personal opinions, but instead based solely on what's good for the town of Monroe. He would work bipartisanly and answered, I believe, all of the committee's questions to satisfaction. Is there any other discussion? Okay, no. Calling for a vote, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 24-124, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, passes nine to nothing. Mr. O'Donnell is here. If I had asked him to step forward to be sworn in by your first elect.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you, Mark O'Donnell, solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Connecticut, and the Charter of the Town of Monroe, and then will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties in Board of Finance to the best of your abilities to help you, God, or upon penalty of perjury?
Very well.
Congratulations. Isn't this all the information up?
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to item B, Councilmember Mauer.
Thank you. I move that the Council pass Resolution 24-125, resolve that the Monroe Town Council hereby approves the first selectman's appointment of Avinash Biruagav, also known as Avi, of 33 Harry Drive to the Lake Zor Authority for a term ending November 8th, 2025.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jen Spurco, Mr. Mauer.
Thank you. Avi has been a resident of Monroe since 1996. He graduated from Massey High School in 2014, attained his bachelor's degree from UConn in 2018, and his master's in public health from the University of Bridgeport in 2021. He currently works as an epidemiologist with the Milford Health Department. Avi volunteers with the University of Bridgeport's MPH program as the alumni coordinator for its Academic Affairs Committee and is also a member of the Hampden Symphony Orchestra, playing in its second violin section every Thursday evening. Given his longstanding ties to Monroe, he is glad to finally have a chance to contribute towards and make a difference in the town that has greatly shaped who he is today.
Very much. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 24-125, please say aye.
Aye.
And Avi is here today, if...
Just a second. I got the aye there. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes nine to nothing. I would ask that he come down to be sworn in.
Could read you right in, please. Avi, do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as Lake Zor Authority Commissioner to the best of your abilities to help you, God, or upon penalty of perjury?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Item C, Resolution 24-126, Mr. Mauer.
I ask that the Council pass the following Resolution 24-126, resolve that the Monroe Town Council hereby approves the first selectman's appointment of Margaret Lee of 26 Overlook Drive to the zoning board of appeals as an alternate commissioner for a term ending August 22nd, 2025.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ian Lapellus, discussion, Mr. Mauer.
In January 2005, Margaret moved to the Northbrook Condominium Association in Monroe. Prior to her retirement in 2007, she served as corporate benefits assistant, then manager, handling the health insurance 401K plans, traditional pension plans and health insurance benefits, giving seminars to and working one-on-one with salaried and hourly employees to help them understand and enroll in these benefits. Her love of nature and the outdoors inspired her to join the Northbrook Landscape Committee, serving there throughout her tenure on the board. She was elected to the Board of Directors in 2008 and subsequently served as VP in 2014, then as president from 2015 through 2022. In that capacity, she represented Northbrook before the Planning and Zoning Commission and two separate cases before the town. Margaret wishes to continue her history of volunteerism by working with the Town of Monroe to give back to the community she loves.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 24-126, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nine, hearing none, passes nine to zero. Please, Margaret Lee is here. Please come forward, be sworn in.
You gotta raise your hand, okay?
I do.
Do you, Margaret Lee, solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties in the zoning board of appeals to the best of your abilities to help you, God, or upon penalty of perjury?
I do. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item D, Resolution 24-127. I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 24-127, resolve that the Monroe Town Council hereby approves the first selectman's appointment of Mary Beth McGuire of 23 Georges Lane to the Board of Health for a term ending April 27th, 2027. Is there a second?
Present.
Second by Jason Mauer. Discussion. Mary Beth is a Director of Corporate Communication at... Boeinger?
Behringer.
Behringer, oh boy. Engelheim, suitable. Holds a bachelor's degree in marketing communications. Mary Beth is a long-term resident of Monroe and resides here with her husband and three children. She is involved with many charitable organizations, including Live Free and UMC of Monroe. Mary Beth is looking forward to using her skills in translating complicated health topics into accessible language, engaging with the community to foster trust, promote health literacy, as well as helping to manage public health emergencies, disseminating critical health information promptly and efficiently. This appointment fills the vacancy created by the resignation of Mike Hurley. Is there a sec? Nope, we got discussion. Any other discussion? We have a second.
Oh, that's right.
Are you, Jason?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 24-127, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, passes nine to zero. Please come on down. We do not have prizes like Price is Right.
One penny.
We're getting ourselves all confused here.
I know.
Do you, Mary Beth McGuire, solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties of Board of Health to the best of your abilities to help you, God, or upon...
Who is here? That's him.
This is for you.
Run it away. All right, moving on to item E, Resolution 24-128. I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 24-128, resolve that the Monroe Town Council hereby approves the first selectman's appointment of Robert...
Primarak.
Primarak of 95 Marian Drive, Parking Recreation Commission for a term ending October 25th, 2025. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jason Mauer. And discussion. Robert retired from GE as an executive with over 24 years of experience, primarily working in corporate accounting. Robert holds a bachelor's degree in accounting and has resided in Monroe for 20 years with his wife and three children. He's been an active volunteer in the community as an advocate for breast cancer awareness, supporting performing arts both in the Monroe Public School system and in other districts. Has engaged with Parks and Recreation Leadership for the Arts in the Park Series since 2014. Robert is looking forward to bringing his passion and fiscal discipline to the town and looking to bring ideas to the commission. This appointment fills the vacancy created by the resignation of Andy Sire. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 24-128, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, passes nine to zero. Please come on down. You know, it's not every time we get everybody to be here.
That's very rare.
You, Robert Primarak, solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as case may be, that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as parking rec commissioner to the best of your abilities to help you, God, or upon penalty of perjury?
I do.
Everything.
All right. Moving on to item F, which is Resolution 24-129. I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 24-129, resolve that the Monroe Town Council hereby approves the first selectman's appointment of Sue DeGeorge of 403 Elm Street to the Historic District Commission as an alternate for a term ending July 1st, 2027. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Donald and Wales. Discussion, second. Sue currently works for the town as the assistant town clerk. Sue graduated from Boston College with an education degree and has always enjoyed being an active member and volunteer at multiple organizations in Monroe. She has resided in Monroe for 21 years with her husband, has raised three children here. Sue previously volunteered for the Stepney PTO, Parents Council, Massey PTC, St. Jude's Religious Education... Is that spring? It's supposed to be sprint, right?
Sprint.
Sprint?
Sprint.
I thought so. Sprint from Monroe and is a former employee of the Monroe Public Schools. Sue would like to focus on becoming more active in townwide programs, is very interested in Monroe's history, and being able to help preserve it through being a part of this commission. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 24-129, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes nine to zero. Please come on down.
Okay, I forgot about the last one. Do you, Sue DeGeorge, solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties under the Historic District Commission to the best of your abilities to help you, God, or upon... Even though you have access to this stuff, I'm gonna give you one. Congrats.
Thank you very much, everyone. You don't have to stay. You've already been appointed. You can stay if you'd like. No ways keeping you here, though. We can't take back the vote.
I think that's a record, though, of six appointments with all six being here.
Oh, yeah, I don't think I've done that before either. All right, moving on to action items. Town Council on Finance, Education, Health, Public Safety Matters, Matt Byer.
We haven't had a meeting since our last meeting a while ago.
Thank you very much. Town Council Committee on Plan and Zoning Public Works and Parking Recreation Matters, Councilmember Duvu.
Nothing up, please.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item C, Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters, Councilmember Reed.
Oh, we did meet. We met tonight, as a matter of fact, and we discussed six items, of which Mark O'Donnell was one of them. We discussed the Performing Artist Engagement Agreement, 2024 Hazard Mitigation Plan, State of Connecticut Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund, the MOA on Ledge Light Health District for the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant, and finally, Connecticut Energy Assistant Program Agreement, all met consensus to reach council. And then we concluded, and that was it.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item D, Strategic Plan Committee. We haven't met since our last Town Council meeting. However, as we all know, the Board of Education has engaged in a facility study that is wrapping up for us to get some concrete information about the conditions of the buildings, as well as a demographic report about student population and projections related to that. So, I will be attending two meetings. One on the 16th of this month, which is the Facility Study Report on the Conditions of the Buildings. And then there is a meeting on the 21st of October, which discusses the demographic report. Ultimately, it's my understanding that the Board of Education will move forward with some type of Facilities Master Committee this fall. And so, I will represent the Town Council on that. And there will be a selection of a member of the Board of Finance to be on that as well. So, I will continue to let council know if there are any updates, as well as some more information about the fact gathering happening, being announced next week and then on the 21st. All right, move on to item E, the Open Space Preservation and Acquisition Committee, Councilmember O'Rourke.
Mr. Chairman, we have not met since our last meeting.
Thank you very much. And item F, our first selectman's update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a long update, so everybody just sit back and relax. I missed last council since I was sick. I apologize for that. So, I have some things that I'd like to catch up on, as well as what's happened since that timeframe. So, the top of the list, obviously, the town of Monroe suffered significant damage from the August 18 flooding incident now being recognized as a thousand-year storm, having recorded rainfall up to 16 inches in the area of Lake Zor and Stevenson Dam. The event started in the afternoon. It became quickly apparent this was a different rainstorm. Warnings from the Department of Homeland Security released through cellular devices and other technology. However, it's been recognized that none of the agencies had the expectation that unfolded in just a few hours. As I was in Stevenson, the majority of the time helping police fire and the Department of Public Works make crucial decisions, neighboring municipalities sent additional assistance. A mutual aid rescue was done on the Monroe border in Newtown with Norwalk Fire Department and our Department of Public Works. Our Public Works Department assisted with equipment that could withstand deep, rapid-moving water. The Police Department of DPW began setting up barricades and other road closure tactics to keep travelers from flooded and washed away dangerous roadways. The Water View had a ground collapse, and at first, reports were grim. However, that situation was quickly under control, and 150 patrons were guided from the venue safely by law enforcement. Our Fire, Police, and Public Works Departments controlled this sudden unforeseen act of nature admirably, resulting in no loss of life or injury. As the storm subsided, the evident damage revealed there would be a significant need for equipment not owned by the town of Monroe. I was informed and made confident by Public Works that we could handle rebuilding our roads with our current town staff. It was at that time I declared a state of emergency for Monroe and approved the rental of equipment needed. That effort resulted in a commendable effort in restoring lost infrastructure and restoring all of our non-passable roads to full operation. These efforts were completed by town staff and Public Works and led by the expertise in heavy equipment operation by crew leader Shane Everett. In just a few days, we had most of our roads open, leaving only Cottage Street and State Road Route 34 unpassable. In just three days from receiving the affirmation of heavy equipment, Cottage Street was open and all roads were also fully paved, saving them from erosion and double work that would have occurred if Monroe needed to wait for an outside paving company. Through this event, I was in contact with state legislators and state representative Tony Scott about concerns for Route 34. As we were finishing Cottage Street, we received news that Manafort Construction was contracted by state DOT to start repair efforts. Myself and town engineer James DeMaile visited the site, and they also were moving at a very impressive pace. It is difficult to comprehend the amount of skill, organization, and mutual aid to get these projects done in a professional and rapid manner in which they were completed, as professionals can make things look easy. However, I want this council and the people of Monroe to understand this was anything but easy. With my goal of having all roads open by the start of school, all members of DPW and the Highway Department were under extreme pressure. However, mutual aid from Trumbull and Fairfield Public Works, providing additional trucking and stone, assisted in making that goal a reality. As we visited homes and businesses damaged by this flood, it was surreal. The amount of water that poured through places like Galbo Industries and Brookside Trail was unimaginable, and the damage left was difficult to comprehend. We kept constant contact with the Department of Homeland Security every day, and that contact is ongoing daily. FEMA met with Monroe to discuss property damage only. The link is once again in my upcoming emergency services update. It is important for all of our citizens to understand that FEMA is a federal agency and only acts under a declaration of disaster by the President of the United States. However, until, or if that happens, the town and state are in a holding pattern. I understand it's very difficult to stay patient. However, FEMA has their protocol, which cannot and will not be expedited in any way by local or state government pressure until the damages are tallied by the Department of Homeland Security, and the threshold of specific damage from this storm of $4,404,127.40 has been met. Therefore, the current state of emergency will stay in effect until further notice pending federal decisions. I would like to thank the surrounding towns of Shelton, Trumbull, Bridgeport, Fairfield, and Norwalk for their rapid and professional mutual aid during this thousand-year flood. In addition, I would like to specifically thank Trumbull and Fairfield for the collaboration in our reconstruction efforts. Thank you to our town staff and directors, Chief of Police Keith White, Fire Chief Kevin Catalano, Chief Chris Christ, Deputy Chief Joseph McNellis, Director of Public Works Chris Newackey, Assistant Director of Public Highway Public Works Bill Phillips, as well as crew leaders Shane Everett and Josh Christ. Also, thank you to our law enforcement personnel, Department of Public Works staff, our fire volunteers, dispatchers, and our EMS for handling this sudden unforeseen act of nature professionally and without further incident. On to emergency services update. The Heart Safe Community, I'm proud to say, on behalf of Connecticut Department of Public Health and the American Heart Association, our town is once again a heart-safe community. This means our community continues to provide improved cardiac response care and utilizing the changes of survival of early 911 access, cardiopulmonary resuscitation, defibrillation, and advanced care. Just an update with the flooding again. There's been a lot of information released regarding the August 18 storm. On August 26th, I released a memo going over Monroe declaring a local state of emergency. The self-reporting link from FEMA to report damage is to be vigilant of natural disaster-related scams. I have added to the link below if there are residents that have not yet filled out the self-reporting link, and it's here at crisistrack.juvari.com. You can find that online in the town of Monroe. Finance, the Finance Department is finalizing the fiscal year 2324 close. It has preliminary numbers showing a potential surplus of 4.7 million, which is inclusive of the Board of Education budgeting overage. On to capital projects, St. Jude. Town Attorney Lito has informed me that my office, that closing dates are being discussed. The community update, I did visit Camp teepee, where I recognized that the Rotary Club had donated a playground to that location. So, thank you to the Rotary Club. Also, Monroe Police Night Out. You know, August 13th, the Monroe Police Department presented the town with National Law Enforcement Night Out. Fun was had by all. There was an estimated amount of 3,000 people at Wolf Park. Thank you, Monroe Police Department and Public Works. It was an honor to be in attendance with my family and see everyone enjoy the many activities that were there. Moving on, Kyle Grinello Bench dedication. Monroe Town Hall's gazebo now has refurbished benches. Thank you to the Grinello family. One of the benches is in dedication to their son, Kyle Grinello, who lost his life to opioids. Kyle's a great kid and is missed by many. I hope this dedication is in his memory as a reminder to all to stay vigilant and to teach our children to stay safe and away from even one-time use. I do want to mention a gentleman of the Historic Society supported that, as well as there was an individual in the community who stepped up. The name of that individual is Jamie Maluski. He actually searched the ends to that bench. His bench came from England years ago, and they were very hard to find. He found the ends to that bench in Boston, drove there himself to get those ends, and rebuilt that bench identical to the ones that were there. And the Grinello family was generous to resurface the other benches there. So, if you had a chance, take a look at it. It's a beautiful, beautiful antique refurbishment job. So, hats off to Jamie. Thank you for being the great citizen that you are. Ribbon cuttings, Dunkin' Donuts had a ribbon cutting, the new building on 111, Village Coffee Bar, which is next to the Noble Gas Station, had a ribbon cutting. Provenel Brothers, which is my old jujitsu team, had a ribbon cutting. That was interesting. Jason, you would love that. They had a Brazilian barbecue. And El Soul Deli, El Soul Deli is open where Brothers used to be and Astronos was on Route 25. We had a ribbon cutting. All great food, all great businesses. Congratulations for opening businesses, and thank you for opening them in Monroe. As many of you know, the Ozil Grant, I attended a spoke at a press conference regarding the $1.8 million granted for open space at 30 Old Newtown Road. There will be more coming with that than I will speak with council about. But thank you to Asputuck Land Trust and the Benedict family for making this possible. that I will speak with council about, but thank you to Asputuck Land Trust and the Benedict Family for making this possible. I also want to thank the hard work done by the previous first selectman Kenneth Kellogg and also Bill Holsworth and Economic Development. Without their efforts, we wouldn't be where we are. So thank you to them as well. Open space and land acquisition grants, it's the Benedict Property, Town of Monroe in partnership with Asputuck Land Trust, 30 Newtown Road, the grant amount was for $1,803,750 for 65 acres. The Benedict Properties adjacent to the existing Paquana-Cusatonic rail bed greenway. The Paquana River Trail runs along the eastern property boundary sandwiched between this property and the 346 acre William Wolf Park. The Town of Monroe and Asputuck Land Trust plan to link the Benedict Properties Trail and increase recreational opportunities with the subject parcel as well as Wolf Park. This property will be used to create an off-street parking area and hiking trail network with scenic vistas, open meadows and dense woods. This parcel featured extensive wildlife habitat, wetlands and a complex of meadows. This parcel contains ideal habitat for numerous state listed species of conservation concern. This is the fifth Ozawa Grant that the town of Monroe has received. 44 Old Fish House Road, Web Mountain, 156 Web Circle, 71 Web Circle, which is now our discovery zone and 104 Old Newtown Road. Thanks to this council, we were able to make the hiring of that assistant grant writer and she, Rose, has been working on sustainable CT. The application package is in place. It has been submitted to the state. The mission is to foster inclusive, resilient and vibrant Connecticut municipalities that provide opportunities for all to thrive by, providing a menu of sustainability actions that build local economies, support equity and respect in a finite capacity environment. Monroe has submitted their application as part of the fall certification cycle. Monroe's application cited 28 different actions for which we are seeking bronze certification. Over 500 points have been accrued as part of our application process. Voluntary certification available to all municipalities in the state of Connecticut demonstrate our commitment to sustainability, ensuring a vibrant economy and a healthy, resilient community in the future. 138, 82% of 169 municipalities have registered with sustainable CT, 46% of which have attained the certifications and the lists are here, gold certification, silver certification and how many municipalities have achieved this. This is an arduous task with a lot of detail. And amazing job was done there. Based on our town, our size and our demographics, we look like we are best suited for the bronze certified. There may be a few things we could do in the future and maybe see silver, but as long as we get through the door, that's great for our town. I also like to recognize as always our new hires. Some of these are replacements from people that have left us. Kara Conroy, library aide, Caitlin Maloney, library aide, Luca Bartlemetjic, adult and teen librarian, Lauren Todd, library aide, Lucas Petway, Parks and Recreation intern, Cassidy Swanson, Public Works Office Assistant. And the promotions, Sue DeGeorge, congratulations, she's, she left. Assistant Town Clerk I to Assistant Town Clerk II. Gene Jarnitowski, part-time Public Works Admin to Library Office Assistant and Tracy Cooling, part-time Finance Admin for Payroll and Accounts Coordinator. Thank you for being patient and listening through that. Back to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. First Selectman. Mr. Mauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the update, Mr. Selectman. One thing I want to ask and one thing I want to add, one thing to ask is if we can in advance get notice of the ribbon cuttings and press releases like that in town, if we can get those in advance even just through email, I know some of us would like to be able to attend those when possible. So.
I used to go to them all the time. Used to see you. So I'll just have, would everybody on council like to be added to those? Okay, great. So I'll ask Bill Holsworth to add you to the council.
That would be great. And then just one thing to add is that I just feel like it's something to mention for things in Monroe. Joe Murawski tonight, Monroe's on Joe Murawski is on the American Ninja Warrior Finals. And there is a viewing party tonight at Masek starting at eight. But just something to share achievements of people in town that are doing great things and he's been doing that for a long time now, but to be in the finals tonight is an exciting milestone. So congratulations to him.
Thank you.
I know Joe well. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
On TV?
Yeah.
I'd like to add one thing with regards to the Kyle Gennella Bench Dedication. During that, I don't want to say ceremony, but during that event, a statistic had come up with regards to opioids and fentanyl deaths in this country. And the first selectman was very eloquent in how he presented it. By all measures, we're looking at probably 75,000 people this year. That's the estimate that'll succumb to this dreaded disease. To put that in a little bit of perspective, that's approximately 157,40 people. As the first selectman had pointed out at the day of that ceremony, if we woke up every other day or every third day to hear that 747 had crashed to the ground and burned with 540 lives, we might see a little bit more immediate action on this crisis. So I just wanted to share that statistic because, you know, it just really, really, really hit home with regards to the devastating effect that this disease has in this community and country as a whole.
Thank you. Yes, hearing none. That's it for action items tonight. Moving on to unfinished business. One item of unfinished business from our last meeting, the Bearsley House Discussion. I had paused comments on that because I believe that our first selectmen want to be heard on this and kind of just to give an update as to, you know, the state of the facility, property, anything else you wanted to talk about.
Yeah, so I can give you, I mean, I put it on the agenda because it's a conversation that comes from the Historic Society. Now, not to be confused with the Historic Commission. The Historic Society is a separate entity. The Bearsley House is an old home that the town maintains and owns the property. However, the Historic Society owns the house. At one point it was rented out. There was a rental income there for the Historic Society, I believe, and it since has not been inhabitable. When homes become uninhabitable, they go into significant disrepair. The Bearly House, Bearsley House is in significant disrepair. So I met with the Historic Society to discuss this as we had spoken previously at town council. And I wanted the opinion of council as to what direction do we think we would be interested in going with this? I did put it out there to say, hey, you know, take a look, drive by. And so far, I don't know if any of you have gone, I did meet Donna Lynn Wales and Amy Lappelius. You've gone there as well?
Yep.
To Mauer, so.
I'm the past.
You have too. Okay. So thank you for doing that. So you obviously have seen basically what's going on. I mean, it's, it's an interesting situation in the sense that we own the property and they have the house and moving forward, we obviously would have to come to some sort of an agreement with them. We have spoken about repairs there. There's nothing concrete, but they have an estimation on repairs, dollar amount that they think it's going to cost. But obviously I would need the support of this council and we'd have to talk maybe about this further once we have some ideas, but I just put it on there so they recognize that we are looking at it, that we are considering that situation. So at this point, I don't know, I know I did miss last meeting. Fortunately, I was sick. I apologize for that. But I know there was some conversation about that. So that's all I have for an update at this point. I haven't been back out there since I met with you, Enid and Donna.
I believe probably at this time to maybe expedite things and more focus things. It probably, it probably should be referred to a committee. I'm going to refer to the Strategic Planning Committee. I think that's a committee to handle the task of fact gathering and making a recommendation to town councils for its further consideration. Is there, does anyone else want to be heard on this side? Mr. Mauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as, as mentioned, I was able to go and meet with the Historic Society at the Beer Tree House, take a tour. I have some pictures that I need to get the selectman's office to circulate to council so they can see them, especially now that it's been appointed to a committee, to that committee so that people can see them. We did have some extensive discussions about what can be done as well as how to get there. They are a 501(c)(3) and the ideas we, I recommended maybe looking into similar ideas to what the playground did with fundraising as a possibility, but not only for the house because the house doesn't necessarily draw the public interest, but also for the grounds, the grounds there are gorgeous. The grounds of the house are impeccable and are a wonderful space. We discussed the possibilities of fundraising to create a dog park, fundraising to create a community garden, things along those lines that could possibly, those grounds could possibly be used for. And if they were able to fundraise jointly for the dual purpose of creating something for the town on the grounds as well as restoring the house, that might be able to get more community members involved and wanting to do that. I think, like you said, I think it's appropriate for discussions in a subcommittee, but just as an idea of the discussions that I had with the Historic Society, if other people have similar ideas or different ideas of ways to do that, that's something to let the subcommittee know so that it can be discussed within those meetings.
Did you go into the house?
We did. And I have pictures both of the internal of the house as well as the external. There's things like trees that are actually growing up through the roof. The roof's probably on the verge of collapse. I will say the, there's multiple buildings. So the house is in rough shape, however, the barn area and the garage actually structurally seem to be in pretty good shape, though they would still need some repairs. Those are nowhere near as extensive as the house is going to need to be able to utilize it for anything.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this matter?
I would just love to see the house used as a museum sort of and do tours there. I can see that happening. That would be cool.
So the matter's been referred to strategic planning, kind of makes it a little bit easier for a committee work rather to kind of narrow down some options. Maybe, you know, have the commission come in and kind of talk about what the best path going forward is. But thank you, everybody who went out. Thank you, our first selectman. Thank you, Councilmember Mauer. For all the help and passion towards this important building. There'd be no more discussion on that. Moving on to new business. Item A, the acceptance of the following donations that individually exceed $1,500. I move that the town council accept the following donation of $2,745.19 value for in-kind donation of mulch at the food pantry. Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Mr. Mauer. Discussion, Mr. First Selectman, anything?
Thank you. As always, all donations are appreciated, especially the food pantry. I'm sure the mulch is appreciated for the finishing out, the outside look of the pantry overall. As always, any donation that's made by the public to our facilities or our organizations is greatly appreciated and will be put to good use. So thank you.
Thank you very much from town council. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the donation, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Bless you.
Pass is nine to zero. Moving on to Resolution Number 24-130. First, I move that the, we waive the reading of the resolution adopting the natural hazard mitigation plan update 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Vinduba. Any discussion on waiving the reading? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. The reading of the resolution has been waived. Let the town council adopt Resolution 24-130. Is there a second?
Second.
Again by Enid Lappelius. Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Connecticut Metropolitan Council of Governments, which Monroe is part of, or better known as MetroCog. The Regional Council of Government includes the town of Monroe, recently developed the 2024 Hazard Mitigation Plan, NHMP update. The primary goal of the NHMP is to reduce the loss of life, personal injury and damage to property and infrastructure from a natural disaster. The effort of developing a multi-jurisdictional plan is consistent with federal requirements while also leveraging the collaboration efficiencies of utilizing regional resources for planned development. The state of Connecticut requires that each municipality formally accept and endorse the grant application by resolution of the legislative body. I respectfully request that you approve the attached resolution at the September 9, 2024 town council meeting. In addition, we do have Megan here from MetroCog. If anybody has any questions or if Megan would do like to come up. Also, our town engineer, James DeMaile, is here to also assist.
Thank you. I would just open the floor. If you have anything you'd like to say.
I think the first selectman, you know, we explained it very, very well, but I also want to beg town staff for, you know, the assistance through this process. Everything in this plan was developed with the coordination of town staff. And, you know, again, we had a pretty robust outreach process. We had two public meetings, we had a survey. So, you know, we look forward to seeing the plan implemented.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Thank you, Megan, for coming.
Hearing none. Thank you again for coming. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 24-130, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Pass is nine to zero. Moving on to item C, Resolution 24-131. Madam Vice Chair.
Resolve, Lieutenant P. Rooney, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe, the state of Connecticut Coronavirus State Fiscal Local Recovery Fund Beneficiary Agreement and any associated documents by and between the state of Connecticut for the Coronavirus State Fiscal Local Recovery Fund.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. There's a motion to adopt Resolution 24-131. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mauer, Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pursuant to the U.S. Department of the Treasury Final Rule for CSL FRF Funds effective April 1, 2022, recipient states may use CSL FRF funds to provide beneficiaries, including municipalities or nonprofits, with funds for facilities improvements or programming expenditures that respond to the public health. Our Director of Community and Social Services has been informed by the state of Connecticut that the Town of Monroe has signed $43,129 in funds based on a number of individuals in our municipality who are over 60 years of age. These funds will be allocated towards needs, needed facility upgrades and programming. This agreement has been reviewed by our town attorney who provided his opinion letter. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 24-131, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Pass. Moving on to item D, Resolution 24-132. Madam Vice Chair.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 24-132. Resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe, the memorandum of agreement and any associated documents by and between Ledge Light Health District for the Purpose of the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Again by Donna Lynn Wales. Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Health Department has been awarded Emergency Preparedness Grant funding in the amount of $10,312. This grant program is provided through the Connecticut Department of Public Health, DPH, I S E. Place the following resolution on the agenda. That's all it has. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 24-132, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Pass is nine to zero. Moving on to item E, Resolution 24-133. Madam Vice Chair.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 24-4-133. Resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe, the Connecticut Energy Assistance Program Agreement and any associated documents by and between Alliance for Community and any associated documents bound between Alliances for Community Empowerment Incorporated for the Energy Assistance Program.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kathy Kohat. Yes, for the will.
Thanks.
Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our Director of Community and Social Services, in conjunction with Alliances for Community Empowerment, an agency contractually responsible for the, to the Department of Social Services, has requested the ability to assist residents with applying for the Connecticut Energy Assistance Program for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five year. Attached is a review of the agreement between Alliances for Community Empowerment and Monroe Social Services. This agreement has been reviewed by our Town Attorney, who has provided an opinion letter. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Resolution twenty-four dash one three three? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Pass is nine to zero. Moving on to item F, State of Emergency slash FEMA Update. Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, obviously in my update, I went through what I felt needed to be said. However, I'm very happy that this is here because as I was leaving my office for Town Council, I received an email from, through Governor Lamont's office, who has submitted a request for major disaster declaration to secure federal assistance for communities impacted by the extreme flooding. So basically, our state of emergency allows us to get funds through the state. The state's state of emergency allows funds through federal. So we have, absolutely have to wait for FEMA to get to their total, but this is a good move by the governor to motivate maybe some funding for the people who desperately need it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this item? Did you, did you have something to? I wanted to bring up the letter that was written from Mr. Nowacki and Mr. Phillips. I'd like it read into the record. I don't know if who would read it. I'm more than willing to.
You may read it.
I may read it. Dated August twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four, addressed to Jonathan Formacella, Town Council Chair, from Chris Nowacki, Director of Public Works, and William Phillips, Assistant Director of Public Works. Subject is "Thank You on Behalf of the Public Works Department for the Town of Monroe." "We'd like to extend our deepest gratitude to First Selectman Terrence Rooney and his unwavering leadership and support during and after the recent flood that devastated our community. The extent of the damage, particularly to our roadways and other critical infrastructure, posed immense challenges. The First Selectman's decisive leadership and his ongoing support made all the difference in the highway's ability to respond effectively, begin the rebuilding process. His commitment to the safety and well-being of our residents as well as the constant communication with our department has been invaluable. Thanks to the resources that the First Selectman mobilized, our department made significant progress in restoring town roads and ensuring that our community can restore normalcy to their daily commutes. His leadership and support during this challenging time further strengthens the mission of the Department of Public Works in enhancing the quality of life for residents through safe, responsive, efficient, and effective delivery of services throughout our town. As we move forward, the Department of Public Works looks forward to further collaboration with the First Selectman. His optimism to further strengthen our relationship with the community and enhance the overall quality of our town is appreciated. Thank you." And I concur. Wonderful job. Thank you. Councilmember Roar.
And it goes without saying, but we'll say it anyway. Thank you, Public Works.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Yes, thank you, Public Works. Thank you to all our wonderful municipal employees that work so hard to get our roads open to be safe, to pass, to go to work, to go to school, to get to medical appointments, to live our lives in a way that we see fit. It was just an incredible job by Town Staff and our, our First Selectmen. And I think we're all very appreciative of, of all their hard work, including our police, our fire, our EMS, anyone who's ever, who volunteered during that storm, both in Monroe and in our surrounding communities. Everybody did such a wonderful job coming together and supporting the town and its people. So thank you very much.
And if I'm not mistaken, that roads from the time of the storm to the roads being open was what, eight, nine days?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Unbelievable. Unbelievable.
Thank you again. All right, moving on to item ten, which is public participation. So unfinished matters, that would be the Bearsley House Discussion as well as the State of Emergency FEMA Update. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate on either of those two items? Hearing none. Is there anyone online that would like to participate on either of those items? Hearing none. I'm going to close public participation. And I am adjourned this meeting at seven fifty-seven PM. Thank you, everyone. Oh, and we are adjourned.